Good afternoon, everyone. Today is May 9, 2024. It's great to see a long, a large group of public participants here interested in our budget. Oh, maybe not. Okay. Today, today is May 9, 2024. It's 1:01 PM, and this is a city council workshop meeting. So this will be a discussion of our fiscal year 25 budget work budgets, and this is part one. So we'll start off with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Ken Tellmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gampoji.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Morris excused from the meeting.
How did that get there? Well, thank you. Boy, hold on. We'll start off with our Budget Director, Mark Woodfield. Thank you, Mayor. We'll see if we can figure this out. We're right under a mic. I'm not sure how good the mic, the speaker will work. Your guys are lucky today. It's not just me. I'm joined at the table by Lars Johnson, our Deputy Finance Director, and by Catherine Boland, our Senior Accountant, who works on the budget with us. So with that, we're going to be swapping back and forth as we go through this today. The first slide is the process of the budget to date, and I put this in here to make it clear of all the processes because we had a strategic planning meeting with council offsite over at the Hasiampa, and then you guys didn't hear a lot from us from that point till now. That's because we've been working with the departments who've been submitting all their documents and information, the requests that they needed, and then we've been meeting with city manager and the department heads to, to skinny that down to what we can afford and to put it into a plan over the next few years, and that takes hundreds and hundreds of man-hours across the city. So thank all the city departments that have helped us get this together to this point. So today, we have our first workshop. Next Thursday, we'll have the second workshop, followed by the tentative budget for the 20, on the 11th of June, and then final budget will be considered by council on the 25th of June. And another date that's not there, but we'll talk about later, is the July 9th will be when the council sets the tax levy for the year. We got too many different things here. With that, we'll turn it over to Tyler to talk about the strategic plan draft that's there.
Thank you, Mark, and, and good afternoon, Mayor and council. I wanted to give an update on where we are with the strategic plan and to touch on how this budget is already moving it forward to achieve these goals that council has set out. So as, as Mark mentioned, and as you all remember, we met in February to go over and create the newly created council strategic plan. We have five goal areas, and since then, we've been working as staff as well as with our consultants managing results to create the implementation plan. That was a lot of work, and I appreciate all of the staff time that went into it with them. We have about 52 pages worth of very detailed how does staff take the steps to achieve these goals. The true next step is to bring this finalized strategic plan to council for a vote, which will be coming up at a voting meeting in the near future, and to share with you the implementation plan so you're aware of the steps we'll be taking as staff to achieve this. But I just wanted to take another minute to touch on some high-level things that this budget will achieve in regards to this. So I'll touch on a few points. For public safety, we've budgeted that the dedicated public safety tax, if voter approved, can move forward so that we can begin to implement that and achieve the, the plans and the goals that council has set, set out with that, which would increase our capacity to respond to medical emergencies, fire emergencies, proactive community policing, and traffic enforcement. Under economic environment, we budgeted for contracted economic development professional services and the creation of an economic development strategic plan. That's within this budget. For infrastructure, we're moving our CIP, our Capital Improvement Program, forward with projects to improve traffic flow and safety. We continue the efforts to develop a long-term water management plan, and we continue to work towards improving workforce housing by receiving the grant that you've been made aware of, specifically the Housing Needs Assessment and the next steps that we'll take there. Under that fourth goal of preserving and protecting the natural environment, this budget continues the efforts around trail connectivity and planning, which was, which was touched on in your strategic plan. And finally, under good governance, the Police Department will be proceeding forward with their own strategic plan, similar to the process that you just went through and what the Fire Department has done previously as well. And budget and performance software will be implemented to track and display progress and show how we're using resources wisely and achieving the strategic plan. So I just wanted to touch on those and say that we are working forward with your strategic plan. We'll bring it to you now that we have dates and data associated with it for your approval, and we worked through this budget process with staff to make sure that we are already taking steps on it. With that, I'll turn it back to Mark.
You're next. Lars is going to take us through the budget, the next several slides.
So I'll cover the, the approach we're going to take in presenting the budget to council and the public. First, I want to say that the slide packet that you'll be seeing today, as well as a detailed departmental packet.
Lars, can you move the mic?
Excuse me, Lars, can you speak a little closer to the microphone? You have a
Thank you, I'll adjust this.
You have a soft voice like me, so we have to get closer.
Is this better? Okay. The detailed department packets, as well as the detailed capital plan, are all available on the city's webpage. So members of the public can go to city's webpage, go to departments, budget and finance, and they'll see on the right column, a current budget process, which will have all the detailed information that we're presenting. The department packets has a lot of information we're not presenting today, so that would be good to review. It has things like the functional org charts, the department missions, the list of services each department provides, current year accomplishments, and what next year objectives are. Today's presentation will cover an overall budget summary on a citywide level. We'll also look at a few of the, we'll start looking at departments one by one as well. General Government covers finance, city clerk, city council, city court, legal department, city manager's office, which also has HR and IT. And then we'll talk through community development, recreation services, fleet and facilities, library and airport. That's the plan for today. And the second workshop will, will cover the remaining departments, which is mainly public safety and public works. If council or, or the public have any questions about the information today or the detailed information that's available online, our Budget Department is here to help with any questions you might have, so feel free to reach out for that. Okay, now I'll get into start looking at citywide budget issues. First of all, on compensation, in the budget, we've included an adjustment of 5.2% based on the Phoenix Metro CPI for all personnel. In addition, a 1% merit, so it totals 6.2%. The merit is given on anniversary date at a recommendation of the supervisor. As a comparison to some surrounding government employers, we've heard that Prescott Valley is including a 5% increase, and Yavapai County is 6.24%. The next area we wanted to bring to you is positions. There were a total of 36 positions requested by departments. And as Mark described the process we went through to get to this point, those were vetted or discussed at detail with departments and city manager to decide which ones we can include in the budget for your approval. We've included six positions that were converted from temporary. So departments had hired a temporary staff and have realized that that is indeed a long-term need and needs to be converted to a full-time position. Those positions have dollars that are offsetting, so it's not a, as big of a dollar impact as a totally new position. So we put those in a separate category. These, we'll go in detail in a future slide Catherine's going to go through and tell you exactly what they are. We've also included five new positions of the 36 that were requested, and we put 13 positions on hold for funding, meaning we identify the departments have the need, but we don't have the funding right now, and that is mainly the public safety discussion, which you're fully aware of. And there are 12 positions that were not included at all. So our budget includes other increases to maintain current service levels largely because of rising costs. The budget also includes a $114 million capital budget. It's for needed equipment and infrastructure. And as Tyler mentioned earlier, the public safety tax is included as a contingency, so the infrastructure and operations that have been discussed will be able to be moved forward if, if the taxes is approved. And we'll have more detail on what that means in a future slide as well.
So Lars, if I, if I understand you correctly, you're going to include as a possibility the additional revenue that would come from the proposed public safety tax in this, but it'll be only subject to approval of that tax revenue stream?
That's correct, and so in government budgeting, we'll have to have appropriation available of our total expenditures to reallocate, so that, that will require a future council action to move to, to act on those expenditures, but we put a placeholder in a lump sum that we can move forward with.
Good. Councilman Gampoji.
Lars, on your previous slide, I was looking at the numbers. I just Googled the inflation rate, which is 3.5, and then I Googled cost of living, which is 3.2. So cost of living in Arizona is much higher than the national average?
That's correct. So the compensation plan that was approved years ago was decided to use the Phoenix Metro as the benchmark.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we've been proposing for the cost of living adjustment.
Thank you. And just to clarify on that, we do that calculation December to December because we need the, we need the number to get the budget together. So we look at the, the annual CPI average for Phoenix from last year to this year to get that percentage, and we can provide a more detailed look at that index if you want.
Continuing the discussion of the, the process that we went through.
Maybe try Mark's microphone.
Okay.
Big difference between the two.
Well, Mark does have, oh, there we go. He does have a louder voice than me, though.
That's right, Lars, get two of them, okay.
Lots of practice.
Let's trade.
All right. Good idea.
Okay. So in continuing the discussion of how we revised requests that departments provided initially, there were $9 million of operating budget requests total. We pared that down in this process to a $5 million number. Of that, 1.6% is in the general fund. The two categories below that indicate that 0.4 is in personnel costs, and then non-personnel is 1.2. We've also looked at it between one time and recurring, so one time increases is 0.7, and a 0.9 is a recurring cost, which means going forward, the budget would be increased by one, or 0.9. The one time will be, as it says, one time implemented, and then that will reduce back We talked about the contingency, that is a $1.8 million operating contingency, and we did not include 2.2 million of those requests. We've also revised capital requests to make sure that we have available funding so we can pay for and deliver upon the capital plan.
So Lars, if I understand this correctly, you had total requests of totally 9 million, and you looked at which ones were justified and then decided that 2.2 million were not justified, so you didn't include that in your actual proposed budget?
Correct. Yeah, there, there may have been good justification and needs in the department, but unfortunately, with available funding, we weren't able to include those.
Yeah, and, well, Lars, just to, just to add to it, the, that 2.2 doesn't mean that they weren't needed or weren't good requests, it's just the funding wasn't there and they weren't a priority for the city manager as we went through the budget process to get a budget that we could afford. So they may come back in future years if, you know, if the need continues, but they're not in this budget. Mayor Protam Ken Tellmi.
Thank you, Mayor. I would have liked to have been a fly on the wall in that discussion, how you get from nine to five. So is, is it fair to say that some of the, the difference are things that may have been on maybe a longer schedule, and they just have to be cut for now and maybe kept on the long track? I've noticed the way we plan so far out, that are there some cases where things are asked for earlier than they were planned for in these budgets, but they still stay on the list?
That's, that's fair to say, yes, that's true, and, and it's, it's hard to pinpoint exactly right now, speaking off the cuff, because there's so many departments and so many meetings. Again, this is operating, it's not all general fund, as you know, this is across all funds, but some things, yes, are simply pushed off, some things are, hey, not right now. It may be a great idea, and it may be something, but we have to balance out available revenues with other demands that are competing right now.
It's got to be a tough position. Thank you.
One other good piece of information is in this not included amount of 2.2, 1.6 of that was general fund. So we did trim the budget down, and we'll show you a few slides of how that balances our budget. Okay, I'll pass it over to Catherine to go in some details about her personnel.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Let me know if you can't hear me, because I tend to be soft-spoken also. So I'm going to go through in more detail the positions that were included in this budget. So six of those were what Lars had mentioned were temp conversions, where most of the cost was really recouped by the temporary wages. So for example, all of these wages were 497,000, while 407,000 of that was reductions in the temporary wage line to pay for those wages, and so it was only a net cost of 90,000. So general fund, 52,000, non-general fund, 38,000. So really, that minimal cost is a, is a generally easier to recruit and maintain people when you have full-time employees. So the new positions, there were five of those that were completely new. Fire Department, there's a fire marshal. The city attorney's office included a new paralegal, and Public Works, there were two equipment operators. And on this one, those two equipment operator positions were something that was recommended as part of the rate study, so that's why those were included, and then in the Engineering Department was a, a project manager. So those new positions equaled around 553,000, and there was kind of split between general fund and non-general fund, about 265,000 in general fund, 287,000 not in general fund. So total, total new actual FTEs added to the personnel roster is 11, if you include the temp conversions and the full-time additions. Next slide, positions on hold. So this equals 13 positions, as Lars had mentioned, it's all the public safety positions. Fire Department, there's two FTE, a fire engineer and a captain, and four firefighters, and then there's six officers, police officers, and then there's a split radio telecommunications position that were part of those dollars that were placed in contingency or on hold. And I think that's it. If there's no questions, I'm going to pass this over to Mark. He's got kind of a historical perspective on positions.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about the fire marshal position. Is that a position we had before and was a hat that was worn by a different individual, or can you guys speak to, like, because I'm guessing we had a fire marshal before, but is it that we now have a dedicated fire marshal in this budget? I just want a little clarity on that.
And I can speak to that real briefly. If you have more detailed questions, I'll look to Chief. But yes, we've, in the past, we did have a fire marshal, but it's always been a dual role. Currently, it's, it's being housed with the deputy chief, Deputy Chief NAP, and so it's a, on top of all the administrative and other duties of a deputy chief, a fire marshal in its true sense is just not achievable, so the recommendation is that it's a separate position dedicated to oversee the inspectors and the, the fire safety within, within structures in the city.
And along that line, I guess, with some of these other positions within public safety, I guess, I wonder with fire marshal specifically, but with some of the other ones that are on hold, do we have a plan for recruitment around that? Because I know there is a bit of a spin-up process to that, so I was just curious if, if you or the fire chief can speak to that.
I'd be happy to touch on that, yes. So the ones that are, are placed on hold based on the outcome of, of the tax question, we do have plans in place for as, as soon as that is known, let's say it's a yes by the voters, we, we do have a plan in place to recruit and, and to, to do it systematically to achieve the results at the right timeframe that we need. So it'll look a little different for police and fire, each has a separate kind of track on that, but yes, we are thinking about that.
With, with the fire marshal, do we have, have we started that recruitment process?
No, I, I don't believe we have, or have we? Okay, Chief's coming up.
Sorry, Holger.
So yeah, that is a fairly specialized part of the fire service, as you can imagine. Currently, there is no internal succession opportunities for that role, and so we would have to go outside. We've started to have brief conversations, but we don't go active on recruitment until you all approve our budget, and so we just don't want to put the cart before the horse.
That makes sense, and I appreciate that, but good to know that you guys are looking forward on that, Atias.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Follow-up on the positions on hold, those 13 FTEs, do those line up to the, you know, the year one, year two plans that we saw from police and fire as we were working on the 0.95 sales tax initiative, or have things changed?
Yeah, so it's, it's been interesting how this dialogue, dialogue has come about. As council began discussing more seriously the tax proposal, it was right in the middle of our budget discussions, and staff had already presented to Budget and Finance some recommendations for staffing levels. So while they're, they're kind of on a parallel track, we are moving these again to the contingency. They can be timed systematically with how we are looking at capital, especially for fire. Police doesn't need capital tied to personnel, exactly like fire does, so for example, those six officers would not need to wait for a building, per se, right? Just, just a vehicle. So there, there are kind of different timelines for that reason, but the, the purpose and goal is that we can line up based on council's proposed strategy for both police and fire if the tax is approved.
So if the tax is voted in, it would go into effect in January?
April.
April, 90 days? Yeah, April 1st, we have a, we have, we have to work with the Department of Revenue. With a November election, we wouldn't have really a canvassed vote until near the end of November, and they need at least 60 days, and they recommend hitting a calendar quarter because you have taxpayers that report monthly and quarterly and even annual, but, so it would be April 1st. But we would be able to start immediately, you know, recruiting positions and moving capital forward with these contingencies that we have in the budget. We don't have to wait for the tax to roll in because we're going to be issuing debt anyway we have, you know, so we have some of it ready, so if it does pass, we can start almost immediately moving these things forward. Thank you. So I get to talk about history since I've been around forever. Mayor Protam, Mayor Protam Ken Tellmi.
Thank you, Mayor. So Tyler, I have a question, maybe it's for somebody else, possibly Joe. What, under recreation services, what is for forestry technicians? And then Public Works, you needed an environmental project manager. What, what are those?
Yeah, yeah.
Jobs?
Joe, Joe can speak more specifically. The forestry technicians, the forestry group came over The forestry technicians, the forestry group came over from the fire department to Rec Services mid fiscal year, this fiscal year, '24, correct?
That's correct. Yep.
Maybe you speak a little more, Joe, to the...
Yeah, so Mayor Protem, to your question, and Joe Baines, Recreation Services Director, we moved the forestry crew from fire into Rec Services, because we have a much broader base to work from, the equipment that they need and whatnot. And that happened mid-budget year last year. So we brought them in as full-time temps. We wanted some employee retention, and like Catherine just pointed out, it's a lot easier to recruit for a full-time position, so we were able to, or we're proposing to convert four of those. We have about 10 altogether, it's kind of a shifting number, but four of them we'd like to convert to full-time.
Do you know about the environmental project manager? Is that, that's a, that's a full-time?
Good afternoon. Yes, it's a full-time position, would be within Matt Colleen's working group. It's an environmental quality position that would support water quality, lake health. This project manager will be charged with seeking out grant opportunities, which there are many, but we simply don't have the staff time or someone who has the knowledge base to go after those grants in our current project management team. So this position would fill that role to help us not only attain monies, but track those grants and all the things that come with grant monies, as well as project managing the projects as they go into the ground.
Well, I'm super excited to hear that about the grants.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Looking at the history on the next slide, 10, I believe, we have our full-time equivalent positions. Just wanted to give you guys a bit of history, 19 years here, back prior to the recession. If you guys recall, back in '08, we had a little bit of a recession. We had significant layoffs, reductions at the City of Prescott. It was mostly done through vacant position elimination, as people moved on or retired, the positions were just eliminated. Took us down, took us a lot of years to get back. As we started to come back, you know, the PSPRS started to hit the general fund real hard before that. So that kept us down a little longer than just the recession. Obviously, the voters approved that in '17, and that enabled us to start to move some of these things back to forward. And with this budget year, this proposal, the 11 positions that Catherine was talking about, we're about back to where we were. That recovery, of those 80-some positions from the bottom to our new high, over half of those have been public safety positions. So just, so council knows and the public knows, we haven't ignored public safety as far as staffing levels. It's just a matter that the community wants more than we are able to provide. But yeah, 44 of those positions have been public safety that have been reestablished So looking at the budget as a whole, we talked about a lot of parts of this, but slide 11 here is comparing this year's budget to last year's budget. As you can see, the operating budget went up 5.9%. We are a service organization, a big part of our budget across all of our funds is labor. So obviously, the labor impact had a big part of that, but we also had increases in utility, APS. Somebody told me the water rates were going up, so that's going to impact our budget as well as everybody else's budget in town. The additional scenarios, the new positions, so we did have a 5.9, which is definitely up. The capital budget fluctuates from one year to another as projects are built and then funds are accumulated, that went down slightly. Contingency, we talked about this a little bit earlier, Lars mentioned we'd get back to it, so we're back to it. The contingencies in governmental budgeting, if you don't have a budget appropriation, you can't spend it. It's not your over, it's not like corporate America or even your house budget, where it's like, oh, that's good, we got extra money, we'll spend it. If we don't have an appropriation adopted through this process that we're going through, you can't spend it, whether you have the cash or not. And you can't reappropriate, you can move appropriation during the year, but you can't increase your appropriation over what your final budget is. So that's why we have all these contingencies, and there is a lot, almost 30 million in contingencies in this budget. We have potential grants of 4.2, that's for grants that we don't know about. We know about a lot of grants, but sometimes grants just come up. So we want to have the appropriation, so we can go after them and we can spend them if we get it. We have the contingency that we talked about for the public safety tax, the personnel portion is about 1.8, and then we have capital about 8.4. Again, if the tax passes, we can start moving those projects forward to get those fire stations delivered as quick as we possibly can. So we want to have the appropriation in this budget.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, looking down the slide on the contingency component related to airport land purchase, I'm wondering if, and maybe I cut you off before you could get to it, but like, I'm curious if you can speak to, that 15 million, is that the purchase we were discussing Tuesday, essentially? Or how does that set up? Can you walk us through that a little bit?
Sure. That's an appropriation, it's a guess. It's not saying you need to spend 15, it's saying, if we don't have any appropriation, you guys won't be able to do anything.
Right.
At the point we are now, where we have not clear direction on which way we're going with this, we put the appropriation in there so the council would have the ability to do something without waiting another year.
Right, and that makes sense to me. I guess, from a budget perspective or a financial, you know, kind of perspective, how are we, is the idea that that 15 million will essentially be borrowing?
Yes, sorry. Yes, that is going to be a bond. Once the decisions are made.
Sure.
And we decide where we're going, where the grants are going to be allocated that are available, and if we need to issue a bond and buy additional land, that is what this is.
And looking, again, down lower on the slide, that million dollars in debt service for that, is that what it would cost to borrow that money, essentially?
That's essentially an estimate in there, again, that it probably won't be a million the first year, depending unless you, unless this happens in July.
Sure.
You know, depending on when, what these projects, council wants to move them forward once decisions are made. But we budget it, because if it does, we need to be able to pay them.
And then my assumption would be, we'd have to budget for that ongoing as well, like a million-dollar debt service?
Yes, 20 years.
20 years.
20-year debt issue, our debt schedule is what we used on that one.
That makes sense. I just, I wanted to appreciate the clarity.
And that is, would have to come from the general fund, again, which we'll talk about later when we get to the airport. The airport is unable to cover its operations, let alone debt service for land, so that would have to come out of the general fund.
Thank you.
Councilman Gamboge.
Mark, every time we talk about the airport, we talk about the cost, and then the FAA is supposed to throw us a bone over the years. So is there any FAA contribution factored in here, or how would you do that?
Well, when we get to the airport slides, we'll look at their projects and have all that stuff there, that's near the end of the presentation. But yeah, and again, this is an estimate, I mean, we've been talking about it, we talked about it again two days ago. You know, there's 20 to $25 million worth of land, there's only $10 million worth of grants, so if council wants to proceed with all of it, we're going to have to issue 15 million in bonds. So we just needed to get that appropriation in our budget. So that makes our overall budget for 2025 at this point, 278,613,343. It's like an eye test up there. Who's next? Oh, with that, I'll turn it back to Lars to go into our revenue detail here.
Thanks, Mark. We've categorized revenues citywide, so obviously, this covers all of the city funds as well, so there are varying levels of restricted revenues and so forth. But just from an overall perspective, here's what makes up the city's revenues that offsets our expenditure budget. Our sales tax, 47 million, projected 3.3% growth over the previous budget. Property tax levy we are proposing would increase only for the value of new construction that's come on board. So we're not proposing any further increase in the tax rate compared to last year. In intergovernmental, there's a decrease in the urban revenue sharing or income tax from the state. It's down 2.3 million compared to FY '24. So that's...
Lars, is that the proposed reduction in the state budget? Or was it actually from last year's budget?
The decrease comes from the fact that the state legislature enacted the 2.5% flat tax. So the receipts statewide are decreasing, and so when they have the sharing to cities and towns, that's also decreasing.
So, and just to add to that, this is a, this is a reduction we knew was coming, this is a reduction we talked about last year, you'll recall, and we're going to get into the recurring and non-recurring revenues here in a bit. But we identified, because of the flat tax, because of the delay of the implementation of the flat tax, the '24 revenue sharing was significantly higher than the year before. So this 2.5 is moving it back down to where it used to be, and then we're going to see another reduction next year as well, as the flat tax continues to move in. The state revenue sharing for income tax is on a two-year delay based on fiscal year collections, and of course, it's an annual tax, so you know, that, you know, that kind of makes it a staggered implementation of this delay. And again, we track that, so we know what our revenues are going to be the next two years out, so that we can plan and make sure we don't build operations into a revenue that's not going to be there.
Well, that's understandable. Can you give us an idea of why the licenses and fees dropped by 900,000?
Yes.
It's Chelsea's fault.
So we are actually just moving between two categories. The building and permit fees were lumped into one account that was under the license and fees, license and permits line. 900,000 of that is moving to inspection services, which is a government service charge. So they're being more accurate in how they're splitting out the cost of, the fees that are covering the costs. Majority of the permit fees come through as a reimbursement for inspections, so we're just moving that to a different category.
So that went over to internal services?
The line right below it.
Other.
Oh, governmental service charge, the 7,130,000, that went up 9.5%.
Okay, that makes sense. So is that kind of connected with the reduction in taxable activity when it comes to construction revenue?
Well, part of it, I believe, is just a reclassification. They wanted to better show the difference between the permit cost itself and the inspection charges. But yes, there is a reduction in the overall revenues because of reduced construction. So it's a combination.
So if they're not pulling permits to build and then paying the fee for the permit, now they're being built, they've already paid for the permits, and now you're doing more inspection as the buildings...
No, it was just, it's all being paid the same as it was before, it's just a movement between categories to more accurately reflect what's coming in as licenses and permits, and what is a governmental service.
Okay.
The, continuing down the list, the utility services and solid waste services are going up based on, solid waste was previously adopted rates, and then we've budgeted a potential increase with the rate review discussion that's coming to council starting next week. Golf course services line is going up significantly with increased activity at the golf course. They are projecting more rounds and more revenue. And then, so the total operating revenues is increasing 3.4%, which is a good number to have. And then below that line is non-operating revenues that fluctuate quite a bit based on the project that's happening, the capital that's happening. The grant line especially is heavily based on the airport capital plan, about half of it, and the other half, we have a contingency, and then some departments have identified potential grants, those are non-operating.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to better understand some things you covered up above. So I was listening, you talk about the community development permit fees of, was it about $900,000?
Yep.
That's being moved down into government service charges, but government service charges is only being increased by 620,000. So what else is being affected in government service charges?
Well, yeah, and that's, yes, license and permits is going down 900 from the year before, but because of the reduction in construction activity over all permits and inspection fees are going down, because we're having less construction activity in the city right now. So it's like two different things. 900,000 didn't get moved, the permitting got moved, but permits and that, the inspection, sorry.
The forecast on construction is going down, so I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Mark, can you tell me, or Lars, what exactly comprises internal services for, what is all that?
Yes.
For 7 million something?
We have four internal service funds at the city, and that, all the internal charges that those funds get are recorded as a revenue. So it's like a double counting in government accounting, but it's both an expense in other funds and it's a revenue in others. But we have facilities fund, fleet fund, the internal risk pool, risk insurance fund, and engineering fund. So as those services are provided to other areas of the department, they get charged for it, and it gets recorded as a revenue.
Okay. Keep those again, I'm sorry, I couldn't keep right as fast as you were talking.
Fleet, so fleet services, I probably won't do the same order, but fleet, facilities, which is facilities, maintenance, engineering, and then our risk insurance pool. Jumping to debt proceeds, those mainly are utility funds and the solid waste fund. So as we do our rate study, we identify which projects are needed to be funded by issuing debt, which will then be covered in operations through debt service. So about, let's see, I have the numbers here, 13.7 million in water fund, 13.5 in the wastewater fund, and 3.8 in solid waste for vehicle purchases.
So what you're saying is, as you issue debt, then the proceeds from the debt are then recorded here as revenue, right?
Right. So that goes to offset those expenses that year. That covers what I had to say on the revenues, unless there's any questions, further questions?
Well, yeah, and just to point, the last two items are the contingencies related to the airport land, as well as contingencies to the public safety tax.
All right. If not, we'll jump to the expenditures for all funds. And this one, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, because they'll be covered when we get to each department throughout the next, remaining of this workshop, and then next week's workshop. Mainly just to point out the totals here, the operations are increasing 5.9% as Mark was indicating in the previous slide. The numbers are slightly different from the total slide, because we categorized the contingent debt service under operations on this one.
Non-departmental.
Under non-departmental. The capital, you can see, is heavily located in public works and airport. The capital, you can see, is heavily located in public works and airport. And then we have public safety and recreation facilities. So the total capital budget plus contingencies would be going up 9.9%. Any high-level questions on this?
Do you have another question, Lois?
No.
Okay. Like I said, didn't want to get into all the explanations of the changes here since we'll be going through those one by one.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you. Lars, I know we're going to get into this as we go into more detail, but the increase on the airport, that 41%, is that related broadly speaking to land acquisition?
Right. That's mainly it, but there's also the full capital plan, which you could see.
Sure. And, okay, and I have another question, but I'll wait till we actually get to airport. Thank you.
Now from here, we're going to jump into looking at the general fund only for the next few This chart shows what we're going to call, as we go through the departments, as the tax base. So these are general revenues that come in to help fund general fund departments. It excludes what we call program revenues, which are generated from reimbursements for charge services we provide. An example of that would be under recreation services, when community members go park at a lake, they're paying a fee for that. That is a program revenue. So we're excluding all of those types of fees and looking at only the general revenues. Of that pool of money, it's $44,223,477 is in the budget. Half of that is our 1% sales tax. So of our current 2% levy, 1% goes to the general fund.
And while we're on this slide, and just to point this out, yeah, the privilege tax and the general fund, there's our major tax there, but just right behind it is state shared revenues. And state shared revenues are based on our population compared to the population of all other cities. So as Prescott's growth rate varies, you know, we grow at 1.3% to 1.5% a year. If PV is growing at 5% a year, we will continue to get less state shared revenue. They will continue to get more. So it is a big part of our general fund is that state shared revenue.
And I just want to make a statement for the public and any of those that are watching online. You'll see here that our property tax only generates slightly over 5% of our total revenue. And we, for the first time in about five years, raised property tax last year because we're restricted on how much we can raise that. And a lot of people think that because of the massive amount of new development in the area that we're benefiting from this, and quite frankly, we get very little benefit from it. Most of the benefit for the increased value of those properties goes to the county. So they get the increased property tax revenue. We get very, very little of it, but we have to provide the additional services to those new developed areas such as police and fire protection, solid waste, et cetera, without the benefit of the revenue that comes from property tax. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. And I would also like to stress that out of the 8.35 sales tax that we charge, we only contribute, 1% of that goes to the general fund.
Okay, then the franchise tax is 4%. We didn't talk about that one yet. So that's other utilities that are using the city's right of ways. We have a franchise agreement with them. They reimburse the city through a franchise tax. So this is electric, utility, and gas mainly. So then when we're looking at the previous slide of where the money comes from that are not cost recovered, are not charged out and reimbursed for, here's how we're spending those recurring
Tax base.
The tax base, as we're going to call it. So police and fire together make up the majority of it, at close to 70%. And then the remaining pieces of the pie, you can see they're totaling $44,808,000. Again, this is net of what we charge out to other departments or residents that are paying for services. And as we look at that in a chart of numbers, this is what it looks like. So the recurring revenue pie for the budget was $44 million. Our operations were at $44,800,000, so our net operations are $143,000. So this is when we're talking about the decisions that we've had to make to balance the budget. This is what we're really looking at, is to make sure operations are paid for by recurring ongoing revenues. We then have capital sources, which are one-time in nature, so we have a use, although a lot of capital does come every year, such as vehicle replacements. Some are project-based that are one-time. Excuse me. And we identify certain revenue sources for that. The $7 million capital source is transfer in from other funds to help pay for some of the capital, as well as, we've identified some of the tax sources as one-time in nature. So that income tax change that we were talking about is going down $2 million. We've already put that under nonrecurring, so it's not, we're not building our operations around revenue that we don't expect to continue or that it fluctuates a lot. Is there any questions on this?
Well, you'd probably not be surprised that I brought last year's budget workshop binder with me, because last year, if you looked at the police and fire combined, we were at 74.3% of the general fund. This year, we are down to 69.5% of the general fund going to police and fire. But we've got increases of recreation services are up 2.9%. Library is up because the county is reducing our revenue coming from the county to support our library. So consequently, we have to fill that gap. So, and it looks like next year is going to be even worse. Community development is up a half a percent. So you add those up, and that's taking away from the total amount going to police and fire.
And just to clarify on that, that reduction, again, we show this so many different ways and so many different presentations, but that reduction of percentage is related to the payoff of the PSPRS unfunded portion. So that increased art where we were paying, you know, 40% and 50% has been going down. So police operations actually went up in budget, but
The actual operation.
Yeah, the actual operation.
Before the amount that we were, I think we were paying like $8 million
At one point.
Into PSPRS.
Right.
So that was categorized as police and fire.
Yes.
When it had nothing to do with operations, staffing, or equipment, or anything else. I was just trying to make their pension liability whole.
Correct. And that's why you've seen police and fire come down from 80% to a more reasonable 70% of the general fund is because that goes down as we paid off that PSPRS debt. So that's all good news.
And it's important to clarify and make that clear, which you did, Mark. Thank you.
Sure. I try. All right, fund balance. I apologize, this graph has a lot of numbers on it and a lot of words, but it's something that I felt important that we include, and so the fund balance that's available. Looking at the first column there, the general fund, again, we were close to $48 million fund balance at the beginning of the period that we're budgeting. 14 of that is being spent down for capital, contributions to the airport, contributions to other capital. We have a lot of capital in this year's budget in the general fund. We have public safety, about $8 million in capital. And so that gives us a 33, about a $34 million fund balance at the end of the year, which is well over our reserves, but there are restrictions on that. Our operating reserve per council policy is 20%, and that is restricted at the $11.2 million, .3 million there. We have some long-term obligations in the general fund that we need to reserve that fund balance for, so those can be paid as they come due. We have these internal loans. These are the internal loans for, you know, bridging the gap on these grants at the airport, the internal loan to solid waste fund, a few of those things. So once decisions are made, some of those internal loans will be paid off as we figure out what we're doing with the airport land. We issue long-term debt to the bond market to recover those funds, and then those funds will be available and be able to be used for the capital needs in the general fund, such as for public safety. And again, we have ongoing, we looked at recurring revenues covering operating costs, but we have capital every year. You know, we go through police cars, we go through fire trucks, we go through building inspector cars, all have to be replaced on a regular cycle.
So for example, when we decide to acquire land around the airport for public safety or safety purposes, not necessarily public safety, but safety for crash zones and things like that, we know we're going to get reimbursed from the FAA. So that's considered an internal loan. And then as the FAA funds come in, they're going to be paid down against that internal loan.
Right. And then those funds will be, that will free up that fund balance so it can be used to replace police cars and other fixed assets in the general fund. And again, with the loan too, you know, right now, we're kind of in flux trying to figure out what we're doing with land. We've bought $9 million worth of land this year around the airport. We have some grants, but we're trying to figure out whether the land we're going to buy, and then we're going to figure out where those grants should be applied to be most effective so that we can hopefully recover some revenue from the other lands. So, you know, it's kind of a moving target right at this point, but as soon as we have that all figured out, we will be able to issue the bonds and free up some of this money, hopefully.
That's why we pay you guys the big bucks to be the sharpshooters.
There you go. Then we get to the streets fund. These other funds are all specific project funds, so they're not really unassigned for use of anything. They have to be used for this specific purpose. Our streets fund has an $18 million, almost $19,000 fund balance. It's in pretty good shape as we look out at street projects, as we look out at funding for maintenance and those things, and we'll get into that on our next budget workshop. Transient lodging has a fund balance that accumulated over the last few years because we've had significant bed tax revenue coming in. That's starting to equalize. We've talked about this last year. You know, we've been up to 1.6, 1.7, but it's really, my feeling doing this a little while is that you're looking at more 1.4, 1.5 as a regular revenue source there. So we don't want to, again, build ongoing expenses into that higher number. So you'll see some contingency and stuff when we get to that bed tax stuff. Water, wastewater, again, these have operating policy. The policy states 20% in general fund, but we only do 10% in our other operating funds. Otherwise, there's significant cash just tied up in reserves. And then the grants and impact fee funds are out there, and that's where you'll see those $3 million that we have setting for police and fire impact fees for use as we build stations. We have $2 million in the streets impact fee out there for some of the projects related to growth, and then a few other minor ones. So with that
Attorney Young, don't we anticipate getting some payment on those opioid suits the coming fiscal year?
We do. I don't know if it's part of the budget, but yes, we have now a payment schedule that's set, and I don't know if it's $160,000 or something in that range. It could be higher. I don't know, Mark, you have those numbers in it?
I think Lars does. We've got to look it up, but we are getting those, and it is in a grant fund. But we did get those, we get them from
Included in your projected revenues?
Yes, it is.
From the grant funds?
Yes.
Okay.
So it is available for council to decide what to do with it. Within the restrictions.
Any further questions on the fund balances? We'll transition, if not, we'll transition over to the look at each department. So as we cover each department, we'll look at a summary of their funding sources and expenditures, as well as we'll cover the authorized expenditure list. And I'll tell you what that is when we get to the first one. We're going to cover finance a little bit in more detail than others, not because we're special, but just because I want
But we are.
Introduce to you the concept of the format, what we're going to go through, and maybe define some of these terms that are on the slide. So each general fund department under general government is cost recovered out to other funds. So that's why when you look at finance, you'll see a split of funding sources. Enterprise funds are funds that are financed and operated similar to business operations. Here at the city of Prescott, we have wet water, wastewater, solid waste. Those are examples of enterprise funds. Internal service funds, we talked about, those are the four I listed earlier. They're, they account for services that are furnished by internal departments, and the fees come from internal departments. And the special revenue funds are used to account for revenues that are derived from specific dedicated sources, so we have to track them separately. Examples of that are our streets fund and bed tax fund. And then the general fund tax base is that pie I was showing earlier with our general type revenues. So when we cover each department, we'll show you what percent of that pie is going towards each, this department. For example, finance department uses 19% of that general revenue. And the general fund program revenues are things that are charged to reimburse the costs of the service. And
It's 19% of our budget is covered by that, and we don't get 19% of the revenue, unfortunately.
Thanks for that clarification. So in the finance department, we also have utility billing, which is 100% covered by enterprise funds. That's covered by the three I listed. So that's why our pie here is going to look different than the others that we're going to show you in a little bit. The program revenue that finance has is TPT tax license revenues. So when businesses apply for a tax license, they make a payment for that license, and that revenue shows here. Next, on our expenditure slide, this will show, again, in total, not including any of the cost recovery. So this will show that our total salaries of $2.1 million. That's mainly going up because of the cost of living adjustment and merit increase, as well as the temporary, a temporary salary position that we've put in the utility billing department for help if needed on the AMI mass meter changeout. We're expecting a lot more customer interaction with that process. So that is budgeted as a temporary help if needed. So that is budgeted as a temporary help if needed. That's mainly the change, but I'll just describe what other services and charges are in our department. We have the audit contract for that's charged here, as well as accounting system software. In utility billing, we have credit card service charges. We pay for postage for mailing out the bills for the 25,000-plus customers that are billed every month. And also, we outsource the mailing of those bills.
So did you add staff this year? Because I noticed you're up 285,000 over last year. It's about a 15% increase just on salaries.
You said we were worth it, Mayor, just a little bit ago. No, we had a temp, we have some, we have the COLA impact, and we, and we have a temporary position we added, and we also have some intern salaries in there that I don't think were before.
Mid-year adjustment.
A mid-year adjustment.
Never mind, that's in between.
So it's some temporary things. We've started an interim program to get the additional help we need to get things done without adding permanent positions. And we also have that temporary person that we're looking for in utility billing if needed. So it is a budgeted level, probably not a level that we're going to actually get to there.
Under each department, you'll see an internal charges line, and that's where the internal services are categorized. So in finance, we have, for example, the facilities maintenance based on our square footage, and then we have IT and HR, as well as cost recovered to our department. The authorized expenditure list we'll show for each department. It's somewhat new of a concept for the city. It started last year, so this, this list will be presented for each department and will be compiled for the council to adopt with the final budget. Any item that's on this list will allow the department to move forward with procurement, make the decision without it coming back to council. So in other words, you're, you're giving somewhat of a preapproval for this, this So if you have any feedback for any of these items for each department, just let us know, and we can, for example, take it off the list if you prefer to see it come back to you later in the year.
Are you trying to get the utility users paying online more and not having to spend so much time or cost on budget, I mean, postage and things?
Yeah, absolutely. That's been a big push of ours, and we actually have quite a few. I believe we deliver, but I'm just guessing, but it's, it's quite a few, like, like 5,000 of our bills are email-only, but people are also paying online. We also have a large population that, that use SurePay. We're just automatically impacts the account. And then a lot of people use the bank pay through your bank, where you can set up all your utilities and whatever, and schedule when you want it to come out of your accounts. So we've, we push those constantly. We have only about 4,500 accounts that actually mail in bills anymore, but people's, a lot of people still want to get the paper bill in the mail. So most of the.
I plead guilty.
Yeah. The, most of that 140 a year, all but like 30 of it is postage, because it's, it's every month.
Mayor, since there's a bunch of guilty people, can I have a follow-up question?
Please, please do.
So now that I understand that my, my preference to get a hard copy mailed to me, even though I'm having you deduct it from my bank account, are there things that if, as citizens like us are watching this, is there ways that you would email us the bill?
Yeah. Yes, you can go on to our, you can call utility billing. I don't have the number. Our general switchboard number is 928-777-1100, but you can, and there's a number on your bill, which would be a better number to call.
Okay.
And they can set it up. You can go online if you have your online account with our utility system. You can go online and select there just to receive an email bill as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And it's, it's not a terrible online system. It's pretty good. You can actually get your water usage in a graph form and everything on that.
Just one final concept on the AEL. So once, whatever number shows up on the final authorized expenditure limit, departments can exceed that by, within 20% margin of change. So if they exceed the budget of, by 20%, it can still go forward. If it exceeds that, then it comes back to council. So this is the finance department's authorized expenditure list. We do anticipate going forward with new budget and performance management software this next year with a three-year contract. We talked about utility bills, and then we have our annual cost for our ERP system, which is our software for accounting, payroll.
Utility billing?
Utility billing.
The whole thing.
Any questions on this? If not, we'll pass it to the next department.
Okay, since Lars set the stage for a lot of the general government funds, I'm going to kind of go through those a little bit quickly, since you know the concept between what these sources of funds are for enterprise funds and so forth. So the only difference in this one is, you see, there's the general fund program revenues. There would be things like administrative fees charged for the clerk's office. Same concept, cost recovery with like 27% of the city clerk's budget being paid through So here's the budget for 625,000, and the overall expenditures are really similar to the prior year. They've only got three FTE in their office, the largest non-personal, non-personnel expenses for elections. So that's going to fluctuate from year to year, so we put that on a separate line to highlight that. Internal charges for this department would be your typical, your HR, your IT, your facilities for the square footage. And there's not too much different there, unless you have any questions.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. I do have a question on the AEL for the city clerk. I'm trying to understand, we know, for example, next year, well, this year, in November, we're going to pay for an election, and then next year, I don't know when the city council election is going to be, is that July or August?
August.
So why wouldn't we have that, similar to what you did in the finance area, where something's going out a couple of years? Why would we not, we know we're going to have an election next summer for city council. Why wouldn't we go out further versus having to keep coming back? Is there a difference in how you think about these things?
These were more annualized costs, so they're going to fluctuate a little bit more. So for next year's AEL, we would just budget for the, that annual cost, if that makes sense, because it's probably not a multi-year contract.
It's not a multi-year contract. I think that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, told you we'd go through these quickly. City council. So similar to the clerk's office, mostly recovered, cost recovery for the sources of revenue, so I'm not going to beat that one up. City council expenses. So the primary increases were for the salaries and for the other services. Salaries, as you know, are determined pursuant to Section 8 of the city charter, so that sets those stipends, and that was what those changes are. The increases in the other services were to make sure that there were adequate funds for lobbying and strategic planning. And there was no AEL for city council.
Council, council member Rusin.
Thank you. Speaking of lobbying, so we, we have a dedicated lobbyist at the state level, so his funding comes out of the city council funding.
That, that is true, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, city court is going to be a little bit different on the sources of funding, because they don't service other departments, they're more of a standalone. So of their budget, 84% of that is general funds. They also have some program revenue, which are things like administrative fees, court assessment fees, I think they have some failure to appear bonds, things like that. Other revenues, they also have some court grants, so that's what their special revenue funds are. Expenses for the city court, very similar to the prior year, once again, from 840,000 in fiscal year '24 to 860,000, most of that salaries for COLA. Their largest expense besides salaries is professional services, as you can imagine. They also have no AEL. The legal department does service other departments, so we're back to the cost recovery model. Risk management is also included in this area, and those funds are also cost recovered for the liability insurance. And they have very minimal program revenues for fees. So on the legal side, you can see that the salaries went up just a little bit. They did add one FTE for a paralegal, and the other biggest line there to note would be the other services. They do cover the liability insurance out of this budget, so that's over $1 million. So that's what you're seeing there. The rest of the lines are pretty standard. Once again, no AEL. City manager, so this one also has some cost recovery for the city manager's office. They do have the element of having economic development, tourism, HR, IT, so they have all of those elements included in their budget, so their pie looks just a little bit different. So more special revenues, they have more grants, they've got more of those type of City manager expenses, overall, again, similar to the prior year, the biggest change would be into the other services area. There were a lot of inflationary items in this budget, so things like subscriptions, trainings, other professional services, again, for the other side of the strategic plan, networking, computer software was one of the things, Canvas, one of the things that are in here, for example. The total budget's 10% over, so with the salary increases, so the other inflationary increases are somewhat less than that. The capital line, in the fiscal year '24, that 389,000 is for the Granite Creek corridor enhancement, and the other 60,000 is the IT for the Mingus Tower replacement. And for the AEL, it's mostly IT-related, for the email firewalls and various central square contracts that are going to be renewing for community development, public service, and the CAD server refresh. So with that, I think that's.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. Okay, so once again, in the spirit of learning, how come in some of the funds here where it says BT funds, that, again, we have a budget for the year, and then we have a total project number that's a different number? How, how do I think about that? If that's a contract, or what else is happening that I need to learn about?
It's the same number. It's, so the annual contract, so like on this one for community development, if that's anticipated to be a three-year contract, so that would be the three-year, that would be the total cost.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, not the general funds, going up above.
Oh, those were grants, and so we ended up taking those off of this, so on this slide, it's not on there, so we took it off. You must have the original version. So we took those off, because grants are going to have to come forward to you to get approval anyway. Okay, so bed tax fund, and I know John Heine's here, so if you have any specific questions, please feel free to solicit his information. The anticipated revenues are, are going to be about 1.5, and that's going to be kind of leveled off. In fiscal year '23, it was 1.6 something. So the idea here is to budget closer to revenue. So the 1.6 there for operating expenditures really is the 1.5 revenue with a contingency built in. So there, they do have a fund balance that they would also like to start reducing. The idea of getting this tax is to use this tax. So on the next slide, you can see the fund balances, so total expenses of 1.8 for the fiscal '25 budget compared to the 1.4. So they were going to start with around $1 million anticipated projected fund balance that would bring their fund balance down if they were to utilize all of these expenditures.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. I am interested in the bed tax, about the discussion we've had about cleaning up the downtown. Is that included in here in '25, and which line is that?
You're actually going to be hearing from me quite a bit this year, so what we are doing is, we are looking at the fund balance and reviewing several projects, and trying to find the best way to create a return on investment and strategically use those funds that benefit not only residents but tourists as well. So the downtown beautification contract you're referring to is something we're working with Public Works. We understand that our downtown area has a heavy influence and needs a lot more cleaning and trash pickup, so we're trying to contract out those services using bed tax dollars. And yes, it is factored in this budget.
All right, moving right along to the community development department. There's three categories of funding for this department. The program revenues are their inspection fees, permit fees, there's filing fees of various kinds. If you look at the general fund portion of their department only, their program revenues cost recovers 70% of their department. If you factor in the grant side of the equation, which is the special revenue funds, it covers So 26% of their total budget is funded through that tax base we've been discussing. On their budget side, there's an increase in salaries and benefits. They, we did have a conversion from temporary to a full-time permanent development service representative. There was also a mid-year change from moving a position to funding out of this department. I think it's a deputy community development director.
Councilmember Rusin.
Operations manager, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'd like to go back to Mr. Heine. I forgot to ask about, were we going to fund a designated community, I mean, economic development director position for next fiscal year?
Yes, I don't think we saw a lot of detail in the slides. That would have been under the city manager general fund budget as opposed to the bed tax, but yes, it is funded. In fact, we're moving forward with the project.
All right, thank you.
Of course.
We, just a fine note of correction on that, it wasn't included as a new. It wasn't included as a new position, but we did fund a budget for a contract. So that would be a contracted service. All right, let's see. Back to the community development department changes. Because they are also funded, or part of their department takes care of the CDBG grant program, those numbers are in various lines in their supplies, internal charges, and other services and charges. Most of the changes you see are related to that. The, under the supplies, the increase is related to the grant for the historical preservation master plan. And also, I think there's a budget for furniture anticipating a move to the new city hall. Any questions for the community development department? Here's the authorized expenditure list. As we mentioned earlier, the grants you see on the bottom side of the screen will be coming off the list when it comes to the final adoption. We've had a note of clarification on that, that grants are not part of our procurement code. So those will come back to council for award. The only one on the list here is the scanning project, so if you have any questions on this, Chelsea is here in the audience to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you. Lars, under the community development, where you've got the grants, that is the block grant money? We've got $300,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, $125,000 to the vets, US vets, and $50,000 to CCJ?
That's correct.
Those are, okay.
CDBG.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, move on to the recreation services department. I'll introduce the funding sources and cover the expenditures a little bit, and then director will come up and complete it. For the recreation services department, that encompasses also the golf course. So you'll see the big 40% section of the expenditures are in the enterprise fund. And then the special revenue fund is the right-of-way maintenance program that's funded out of the streets fund. Charges for services are under program revenues, such as parking fees, special event fees, facility rentals, and so forth. About half of the total budget is funded through that general fund tax base, 46%. Again, as I mentioned, this full summary of the recreation services department includes the golf course.
Can tell me?
Yes.
Thank you, mayor. Lars, I noticed the recreation services piece of the pie went up quite a bit. Just for clarification, was that the Glassford Hill purchase in that? Or how did that go up from like nine, I think it was last year, nine point something up to 14? Let's see, can't remember now, but it's increased quite a bit.
So Mayor Protem, on the capital side, yes, Glassford Hill was in the 23, or in the last year's budget. So that's been taken care of, so now what you're looking at in the proposed budget is $2.8 million in capital. Is that what you were referring to as the capital?
Well, what I was referring to is the FY '25 general fund operating expenditures. Recreation services and facilities is 11.7, and I think last year it was nine point something. Do you remember?
Okay, yeah, so I'll take the slide over if you're okay with that, Lars. So it's a few things, Mayor Protem. One is mid-fiscal year, we took the forestry crew from the fire department into rec services, so that increased that quite a bit. Of course, the COLA and inflation in general is probably the other part of that. Those are the two biggest parts in the jump from 5.3 to, or five, or 6.1 to 6.3 million. So those, that pretty much covers that. Again, supplies are influenced by the forestry crew, more additional people that we've converted to full time, so we've got more supplies there, and of course, cost of goods is going up. So I think those were the things that, you know, kind of jumped out at me that I wanted to help, you know, give some background on. But if anybody has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
I'm sorry, I don't have a question.
Please proceed.
Oh, I'm done now. If we want to talk about the capital, it's on the next sheet here. So obviously, we have a lot of pavement preservation, Pioneer Park parking lot, Heritage Park, you name it, we've got a lot. So we budget annually for pavement preservation. Our vehicle replacements, our rollovers from last year that we really haven't received. The parks maintenance shop is another one where we're crowding ourselves with, you know, forestry, among other things that we've taken on over the years. So we want to build another building there to help house supplies and people. The light pole replacements, this is really an effort to replace a lot of our wood poles. We go annually and have density tests done on the poles to see what kind of structural life they have in them. This last year, there were a few that were identified, so we're going to get rid of those wood poles as they become a safety issue. That's why it's an ongoing type project. The mower replacement is a rollover from last year as well. That's a mower that mows all the ball fields in the city of Prescott, of which there's 13, and some of the park areas, obviously, too. And then the skid steer is a new request that, you know, we do a lot of earthwork, a lot of projects, a lot of landscape projects, so we're in need of another skid steer to help with that. Okay, this one, I wanted to spend a little more time on, too. So as you can see on the operating revenues, they continue to grow. That's a good thing. The bad part of it is operating expenditures continue to go up, too. One thing that I do want to point out on the operating revenues is that just in April last month, we did some rate increases at the golf course that will probably result in between $200,000 and $300,000 of additional revenue. It won't affect the operating expenditures, those have already been anticipated, but we will grow that revenue line a little bit just for those rate increases, and we'll continue to keep a closer eye on that. Our capital outlay is really, it's deferred maintenance over many, many years. You know, we picked up the golf course about eight years ago, and we've really been trying to catch up with things that weren't done in the past. So really, the general fund and bed tax have helped support those capital projects. They're descending to a certain, to a certain degree. There are still some bigger ones, but they're not immediate. So in the next upcoming few budget years, you probably see a decrease in the capital outlay projects. The $469,800, or $988 is equipment, mowing equipment, just regular maintenance equipments at the golf course, which you approved about two months ago. Those are still, it's a rollover essentially, it's still, we're waiting for those to come in. They won't come in until next fiscal year. So that was the main point. And I also wanted to point out, too, a couple of other things that are part of this budget is, one, we pay rent to the airport. We transfer about $100,000 a year to the airport. And that's because the Centennial Center, as well as some of the golf course, lays within the outline of the airport. And according to the, to be able to receive federal grants, they need to receive revenue for those, so we're billing ourselves. But it does make this number look a little bit different than the reality of it. So about $100,000 gets transferred. And then I do want to point out, we are one of the best affluent, treated affluent customers for the city of Prescott. We pay the same rate as Prescott Lakes pays, so about $300,000 a year we pay back to the city of Prescott for the use of our affluent, just like any other customer. And I think that's about it on that, unless you have some additional questions.
Councilmember Rusing.
Even though I don't golf, I love going out to the golf course. It's so pretty, and I like going to the Manzanita Grill. How is that structured? Do they lease from the city, or what kind of revenue do they generate? How are we, do we split the profits with them, or how does that go?
Councilmember Rusing, that's a really good question. It's important to clarify that as much as I can. We have a management agreement with Troon Golf. They manage, so all of the, all of the revenues are ours and all the expenses are ours. We pay them a flat management fee per year to manage that for us. You're correct, in these numbers, in these revenue numbers are the Centennial Center and the Manzanita Grill are included in those numbers. And it's, you know, anybody in the restaurant business can tell you it's been a challenge the last few years with cost of goods, especially food, especially during the pandemic and shortly thereafter, sometimes you couldn't even get things. So we continue to work on controlling the cost of goods. It's starting to level out a little bit. But both, in my opinion, I'm a little biased, but high-quality food, good service, and a really nice setting.
Thank you.
So Joe, what is your goal here? Are we going to try to get to a break even?
Mayor, that's a great question. I would love to get to a break even. I will. I think the reality of the situation is that any of the capital projects will probably be, have to be supported by the general fund. But I do believe at some point in time, we can get to a point. For example, you know, the airport, if that ever came out, we're not exchanging that $100,000. There's $100,000 that we're clipping off of that. We are positioned perfectly. They aren't building golf courses. We are positioned in North Prescott, which is the growth area. It's really easy from Prescott Valley or Chino Valley or any of those. So our rounds continue to grow up, go up every year, they model rounds. So yes, mayor, the goal would be to get to a break even.
Well, I know we're one of the few municipal courses in the whole country that's increasing rounds. And I know we've made a lot of investment in improving drainage and irrigation. So those should be paying off in more efficient operations. So when you've got increasing revenue from rounds and a reduction in kind of overhead costs for dealing with poorly functioning irrigation and things like that, it seems like we should be going in a direction of narrowing that negative delta.
That's correct, mayor. And another thing about, you know, I bring this up every time we talk about the golf course. It's a little bit like farming, you know, you can have a great crop and then a hailstorm comes in. So it's dependent upon weather. Some years, we have, you know, 30 days where we're closed completely, and other years we'll have two days where we're closed. So it's going to fluctuate a little bit, but yes, mayor, to your point, the goal would be to make it break even on revenues versus expenses, understanding that capital outlay in the future will probably continue to be subsidized, just like other recreation within the city be subsidized by the general fund.
Well, and sometimes the economic benefits are not really quantified in these types of reports. When we have all of these major tournaments, we have the NAIA tournaments for Amory Riddle, high school tournaments, things like that. So we bring in golfers that stay here for a couple of days and spend money in our hotels and restaurants. So they generate bed tax and taxable TPT sales that we wouldn't see otherwise.
That's correct. And just for the council's information, in 2017, we did have the National Golf Foundation do an economic study on it, and it estimated that it was about, in 2017, it was about a $7.2 million annual economic impact that the golf course brings to the community.
Thanks, Joe.
So I'll talk about the sources, and then we'll pass it also to the department to continue. Fleet and facilities are two of our internal service funds. They're charged out based on a couple of different factors. For fleet, it's on actual labor and parts that is done for a vehicle, work that comes in the shop. And facilities is a set dollar amount per square foot for maintenance, janitorial, and utilities. Or they're separate rates for each of those three categories. So this graph shows you how these funds are recovering from other departments. 52% of that comes from the general fund, 8% from special revenue, 34% from enterprise funds, and other internal service funds, 6%. On the change for the budget side, you'll see that the budget stays pretty much the same, except for under other services and charges. We included in the budget a $300,000 increase for building maintenance. That's related to two specific things with the desire to replace HVAC units at the library and updates and upgrades to some other buildings. On the capital outlay, that includes things like the new city hall improvements, the generator for the new city hall, finishing up the library ADA parking, parking lot refurbishment, and continuing the card lock system for citywide facilities. And I'll pass the review of the expenditure list to Joe.
Okay, obviously, this carryover from '24, we're continuing with the new city hall improvements. Probably about two weeks away from the move into the second floor with the adjustment, again, of moving fire to the back and other departments into the front. The exhaust capture system, I believe, is the fire department for the fire trucks as they're in the bays. The citywide card lock system is a rollover. A lot of it's been done. Tim, what percentage of completion on that are we?
So just back up, the exhaust capture is one station. So it's, I won't call it a trial, but it's a way to get this implemented, and over the course of a few more years, we'll eventually hit all the stations. The card lock system, we have about three major facilities left within the city to complete that project as a whole city.
Okay.
Will this 150 complete those three, or is this also being phased over years?
So the 150 will complete what's covered under facilities. The wastewater treatment plan at the airport is not covered under facilities, so that'll be funded through them.
All right, and then any other questions from council? Okay, and then on the fleet expenses, some carryover from FY '24. And then wheel lifts, that's the lift in the garage, right?
So these are the big lifts we use for the larger trucks. The current lifts we purchased when the building was built, so they're reaching the end of their life expectancy for safe operations.
Okay, and so we'll get into vehicle replacements a little bit. It's an exhaustive list, but I do want to start that conversation off by saying that through the FAB group, which is a representation from a lot of different departments in the city, once we get the initial requests in for new vehicles or new equipment, that group comes together. We review that, and we usually cut some of that based on that conversation. Then it comes to the city manager, and then we cut it again. The next, or the result of that was, we went originally from about a $9 million vehicle and equipment request down to what I think we're at right now, which is $4 million, 6.5 million. So we've cut over 30% of that just in those between FAB and the city manager's office. So unless there's specific questions on any particular vehicle or any of that, I don't know that I need to go through every single one of these, but our, the.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Since we're on the topic of the fleet, has there been any efforts to get more hybrid vehicles into our fleet? Because we have a hybrid. It's a non-plug-in RAV4, and it's been wonderful as far as gas efficiency.
Good question, and we actually have implemented it. We have several of those in the fleet now that arrived this year. The most recent one I can think of is Public Works. Matt Kline actually drives it around. So we are implementing those where we can.
All righty, thank you.
And then I just want to point out, too, and again, on any of these particular vehicles, if you have a question, fine, but in fleet, in fleets all over the country, essentially, 100,000 miles or 10 years of service for a vehicle is about when you're looking at replacing it. Right now, the average age of our fleet is about 12 or 13 years. So we have been trying to get that down a little bit, but it's difficult when we have choices. choices like this to make. And so, you know, we've been very, I think, conservative in what we've approved in this list. But again, that's kind of what we work from, is 100,000 miles or 10 years. And in some cases, we've got stuff that's over 20 years old, but doesn't, it functions well because maybe it doesn't put as many miles on, or it's a, you know, a specialty use kind of a thing. But in general, it's 100,000 miles and 10 years.
Mayor Protem can't tell me.
Actually, that kind of answered my question. Is that a citywide policy, or is that just kind of something that's done in the industry?
It's an industry, kind of an industry standard. That's what we go by, and I think it's pretty common across the country as well. But, and that's just a guideline. Like I say, there's some that can go a lot longer than that, and then there's some that might have, you know, flaws from the factory or whatever, that, you know, we don't want to continue to fight with them. And we also track, you know, the expense that we're putting into each vehicle. So on top of that, we're looking at a vehicle that's eight years old, but all of a sudden the repair costs are starting to tip us over on that, then we're going to look at replacing that.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Yes, probably plan your budgetary requests based on the 100,000 or 10 years, and then balance that with the maintenance logs on those individual vehicles to find out if they're really starting to cost you a lot, or maybe they're not. So you let them go another year or two.
You're exactly correct, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I missed on the capital outlay. The, this past year, we were budgeted 4.7, we only spent two. So I understand some of that's carrying forward, and it was new City Hall, including the second-floor HVAC generator, and what else was in that?
In that particular line item on the City Hall, you mean?
Yeah, back on slide 44.
That's still part of...
So the generator was a big one. That was approved, ordered, won't arrive till this fall. Then that contract for that whole project is part of that, is a carryover too. A lot of it pertains directly to City Hall, just procuring the items is taking a lot longer.
And is this also including the first floor?
Yes.
As our tenants will be leaving, and we can begin down there too?
Correct.
In this upcoming fiscal year?
Yes, that number will finish off City Hall.
And so in the next fiscal year, are we expecting here that this chambers will be down on the first floor by the end of next fiscal year?
I sure hope so, yes.
Amen.
That's the plan.
Can I say something?
Yeah, we might end up with more than one or two members of the public.
We might.
That'd be nice. Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, Mr. Legler, I would just like to thank you and the Facilities Department for all your hard work in the last couple of years in converting the, doing the TIs for this space. You know, last week, we were over at the old place for that open house, and I just, I couldn't believe we were in there. It was pretty funny, but thank you. This has been wonderful.
Thank you.
And if I could, just one last thing on this slide is that, you know, getting vehicles in in a timely fashion is still an issue. We've tried to be as creative as we can to try to get things ordered and in, and I think Justin Hill, our manager, is probably as proactive as anybody, but that does continue to be a problem, although not as much as it was a year ago. Oh, now the library, Roger.
So, start here with the operating funding sources. Obviously, general fund, you're aware of what that is. Eighty-four percent of our funding comes from the general fund. Program revenues include things that the library charges for. That would include things like damaged books or lost items, copies that are made at the library, lost card replacements. Room rentals are included in that, as well as postage for interlibrary loan materials, those things that we borrow from outside of Yavapai County. And that leaves the Yavapai County Free Library District. So the amount that has been shared with the municipal libraries has been going down over the past years. The total amount that was distributed in '21, '22, and '23 was $1,675,000. In fiscal year '25, it'll be $1.2 million. So that's a 28% decrease in what we're receiving from the district in that amount of time. The numbers that I quoted there is what's put in for all of municipal libraries, and that's further divided by a formula that was agreed to with the library directors about 15 years ago. And so what that means for Prescott Library is that in '21, we received $597,000, and in fiscal year '25, we're anticipated to receive $420,000. That's almost a reduction of 30% over those years. I'll point out that during that same time period, the net assessed value of the county rose by about 20%.
Yeah, Roger, I'll make a comment on that. I've talked to county supervisors regarding their Free Library District expenditures. We continue to provide funds to the library district as they continue to reduce the amount that's returned to support us. So it's pretty clear to me that they're shifting their expenditures into some of these other smaller libraries that don't contribute to their revenue. So we end up, in essence, subsidizing libraries throughout the county. And that's a little disturbing for me. At some point, maybe we ought to just have the county take over our library system. I don't know if you'd like that, but if they continue to... Right now, they have, they're going to have an item on the ballot in November to increase their expenditure limit, because they're receiving so many additional tax revenues from property taxes that they can't, they don't have the approval to spend it all. But then they're cutting funding for our library services. So I think we have to have a continued effort to speak with not only one or two members of their board, but all of them, so that we can say, you know, our choices are to cut our services while we continue to give you more revenue from our tax base. So something's got to balance at some point.
No, I agree. The municipal libraries, you know, Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, Sedona, provide the bulk of the money that goes into the district funds, but the amount that we receive back continues to fall. As for having the county take over the library, I think what you would find is that they would still want to have that amount of input from the city in order to provide those services, or you would have a drastic decrease in services, which wouldn't, well, wouldn't be very popular with the library users in the city, so.
So I would just recommend to other members of the council, if you have a chance to talk to any of our county supervisors, use that as a starting talking point.
How about at the upcoming various board of supervisor candidate forums? We should all line up and organize.
What a great thought. Thank you, Councilwoman Ferworth.
So this is the upcoming expenditures that we've requested in the budget. So the total operating, of the total operating expenditures, 59% of that is salaries, and so that accounts for a lot of the increase. Things that probably jump out at you are a 14% increase in supplies. That includes replacing the public computers. IT has said that those computers that we currently have are not able to be upgraded and need to be replaced. They're heavily used by the public on a daily basis, so that's about a cost of about $40,000. And the other big item in there is replacement of the chairs in the upper conference room, and I think you've probably all used that at some point. Those chairs are just basically, the upholstery is cracking and falling apart, and some of the chairs no longer have the controls for up or down, so, you know, you're chin-level with the tables. We need to replace those.
So Roger, 150,000 increase in salaries and benefits is about seven and a half percent. How is that justified?
Yeah, we have, I think we have one half-time, one part-time temporary request as well, and that person would be overseeing and recruiting volunteers. So currently, we have about 120 volunteers working in the library, which equates to, their hours equate to about five FTE. So we're looking for someone to better keep that recruitment going and manage everything that needs to be done to keep that program.
So you're planning on moving that from a part-time temporary into a full-time?
No, we currently, we currently have it folded into our support services manager's position. It's one of those things that continues to grow, so we want to have a part-time temporary position to oversee the volunteers.
Well, if the county keeps cutting our revenue stream, then we need more volunteers, don't we?
That could very well be, yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. Yeah, the only thing I was wondering, I know you have an amazing group of friends who help a lot, I was wondering if maybe helping us with some of the chairs or the public computers might be an area that we could get some grants or gifts to help offset, reinvest in your volunteer position.
Right. We have requested a number of grants this year, LSTA grants. So we received $38,000 in a grant to help renovate the teen zone. Again, those are furnishings that are falling apart, as well as a $4,000 grant for Wi-Fi hotspot services. That's another service that the library has. It's very, very popular. The Friends, as you say, also help support the library. Last year, we received about $120,000 from the Friends. That pays for all of the programming. They also paid for all the upgrades to the Founder's Suite that happened over the last year. And this year, we probably will be requesting from them about $180,000 to $190,000. We're still working on their funds request for them, so they do help out a lot each year. Oops, I'm sorry. So the other thing I wanted to address was the other service and charges. That's also gone up by 15%. The biggest piece of that is the way that our membership fee for the Yavapai Library Network works. We have to pay a membership to be part of the network. That's about $36,000. In past years, it's been deducted from the amount that we receive in contributions. This year, they're making that two separate things, they're giving us a contribution, and the charge is coming out. So the charge is separate this year, so it'll show up here, whereas in previous years, it was just deducted from the top of the contribution before we received it. So that's the bulk of what this has increased.
Would it be possible to get a one-page write-up of all of these related issues related to the county, so that we could individually do what we need to do with not only the current supervisors, but also all of the other candidates, to make a bit of a fuss about fair treatment here?
Yes.
Or lack thereof?
I could do that.
In fact, I think we have some county supervisor meetings happening next week, some candidate forums, and so if we could get this by Monday, we will go to town. Thank you.
Try to get all that together for you. The other capital expense there is replacement, is a replacement disc cleaning machine, and what that does, it refaces and refinishes DVDs and CDs. So all of our DVDs that people check out and use, and all the books on CD that people check out, instead of having a few uses and being scratched beyond use, we're able to repair them and check them back out again. The one we have is currently on its last legs. Our authorized expenditure list is pretty short. It's the recurring library books and materials that we buy every year. $180,000 of that cost is set out in the money that we receive from the county, that we should spend that much on library materials. So I just included this slide to show you the use of our library. So the use continues to increase, the visits, I think averages out to a little more than six visits per person in Prescott. Some of the checkout items have gone down a little bit this year, but you can see that programming and meeting room use continues to increase. So programs are just those programs that the library puts together and puts on. Meeting room use is only community groups. So that's a number of times that community groups have used our meeting rooms in the past year. Now, this is sort of a summary of the different types of groups that use our meeting room in a typical month.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, and it's in regard mark to the five-year capital budget and some things in the library that are in there. Is this going to be something you want to hold off and talk later, or should I be asking these questions now?
We should take them up right now. Again, that's on the website, available for everybody to review.
Okay, so then I will ask about it now. I saw in the five-year capital budget, two big expenses out there, one in '27 and one in future years, for branch libraries. When are we going to have a discussion about that in light of what's, how much fun we're having with the county?
Well, what, our intent there is to just keep that idea that is about the branch library in front of the council and the public. As you know, the Friends received a $5 million bequest a number of years ago for that. They did do a study about the cost. We did get an unofficial update on the cost for the first phase of that. I think the biggest, the biggest piece of going ahead with that project is funding for staff. And as you know, staff is an ongoing cost, and it's easy enough for the Friends to build a building, but unless we have the money to staff it, that's another thing altogether.
Yeah, I just thought on our five-year capital budget, we would have realistic projects. So this one kind of struck me as a little bit of a pipe dream, but I just didn't understand why it was there.
Well, and again, it is a little bit of a pipe dream. It has been discussed by council. It was, obviously, as we went through the budget this year, it's one of those things we pushed out several years from like next year. We didn't want to obviously start it, because we haven't had those discussions. Council hasn't given, you know, final direction on whether we say, no thanks, Friends, take it to the library district, let them do a library district library out there, or whatever. But we did want to keep it on the radar, as Roger said. I mean, as opposed to just taking it off when we have the Friends, you know, willing to build it, it's something council has to make a decision on, like, yes, take it off, we don't want to see it, we don't want to support a branch.
to see it, we don't want to support a branch library in the future, and then we would remove it. But again, it'll probably just stay out there as something because it has been discussed and has been something the council has looked at. Does that answer your question?
It answers the question. Now I'm looking down the dais because I think we have to have a discussion. Again, in light of everything that's going on with the general fund, and as we look ahead, things with the library, things with public safety, you know, fleets, aging fleets, et cetera, you know, there's wants versus needs. And we have the best library in all of Yavapai County, as far as I'm concerned right now. And in light of what's happening with the money we're giving to the county, and they're not even reinvesting back, I do not know why we would, at this point, have in a five-year capital plan. I could see maybe in the future year column out there, but in the next five years, I can't see us staffing a second library in Prescott. And I do believe that this should be one of the things that we're asking all of the county candidates or incumbents to say, what are you going to do to help? We have so many people from Williamson Valley and Chino Valley and other places come down and use our library. So there is a need in, in the northern half of the Quad City to have another library, and maybe they should be considering it. So I would highly recommend we take it off of our five-year capital budget because it keeps putting the pressure from the Friends coming to us, where really, all the pressure should be going to the county.
So if it's a consensus of the council to take it off or move it out to the, beyond the five years, to future years?
Well, there was, there's eight, seven million or so in fiscal year, well, a bunch in fiscal year '26. I don't know what 800,000 is there. There's seven million in fiscal '27, plus the library automatic machine, I guess, to go to it. And then in future years is another eight million, for a grand total of $15.8 million.
And again, if council would like it removed, we can remove it. If that's the consensus.
Mayor Protem, can you tell me?
You know, Mark, I looked, I looked into this about a year ago myself, and, and I know that we had the grant. And then there was some talk about Echo or AED giving us some land close for this library. Did that ever materialize? The way I figured it out about a year ago is we were about seven million short.
Yeah, the AED land, that was...
I can address the AED land. That was part of the development agreement. They agreed to give us a certain parcel of property if we used it within, and exercised our option within a certain amount of time. That time's passed. So the AED is not really an option at this point.
So if we do what Lois is suggesting, and I don't think it's a bad idea, what happens to the grant money? Can it just stay in there until at some point in the future we use it?
Well, again, that's, yeah, that's...
Well, it's actually not a grant, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's not a grant. We don't have the money, they have the money.
Okay.
If we ever move forward with it, I would assume we could approach them about getting that money, or if council wants to direct them to go to the library district.
Yeah, the money was received in a, in a will, and it specifically states that it's for a library, it states that it's for a branch library or to replace the main library in Prescott. And it, it also says that the Friends can, can choose to do that now, at the time they receive the money, or at a future date. There's some disagreement amongst the lawyers what all that means, so I'll leave, I'll leave that part up to the lawyers.
And one last thing, was it five million or four and a half? I can't remember.
I think it's up to about seven million now that they have in the fund.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Rusin.
Oh, I was just gonna suggest that maybe before we do anything, we consult with the Friends and see what they think we should do.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Frerworth that keeping it in the five-year plan is probably unrealistic. We've got some much higher priorities to work on between now and the next five years. And based upon an analysis of the legal consequences of that gift, it may still be able to be utilized effectively, but I don't see it being included in the five-year capital plan.
We will be glad to remove it. And again, the, the grant isn't held by the city, it's held by the Friends. So we will take it off.
Councilman Gamboge, what do you think?
Take it out.
Councilman Montoya.
You know, I think it's reasonable to kind of pause at this point. So I, I mean, I know we're at some logjam with, as Roger mentioned, with the attorneys. The only concern I have is, I'll just throw this out there, the library is exceedingly popular in our community. So I would, I would say that we be conscientious to the reality that there, there are a lot of folks who leverage and utilize the library. I missed, obviously, I left and came back, so I missed some of the conversation. It's unfortunate that the county has taken an antagonistic attitude towards their funding approach. I certainly would encourage, and, and I plan to myself, have conversations with our various supervisors about that, to see if we can't reach some sort of detente where we stop losing revenue that our taxpayers are paying into that system. I understand the idea of trying to benefit other rural libraries, but one of the things that I think is remarkable about the way the Yavapai Library Network works is that if I'm sitting in a small library in Ashfork, I can request a book from the Prescott Public Library and have it brought to me. So that's, that's a unique capacity. So I guess, I, I think it makes sense to, to kind of pump the brakes on it right now. I do want to just be sensitive to the fact that, like I said, the library in our community is exceedingly popular. It's heavily leveraged by a lot of our residents. And, and I don't want to give, I don't want to leave our, our constituents or our residents with the idea that we're trying to go after the library. I think we're just trying to be fiscally prudent, and that makes sense to me.
Right. Councilmember Rusin.
I can see where everyone's coming from, but I still think that it'd be a courtesy to discuss this with the Friends before we do anything. And then maybe next week when we meet, I assume we're gonna have another budget session, maybe decide then, after we consult with the Friends. I think that would be just a common courtesy.
Mayor Protem.
I think we should take it off because we do have more pressing things.
Well, then say so.
I'm sorry. I thought that was a secret conversation. I do think in, in light of what Lois had mentioned, and the fact that we do have kind of more pressing things for right now, I would prefer to probably take it off. It's, it does provide a, okay. So I think we should take it off for now, but I guess we, can we, can we just do a hand? I don't know. So the proposal here is to take off the fiscal year 2027 library in the five-year capo plan, but leave that future eight million dollar out there, and we can have lots of discussions with lots of organizations.
Yeah, I don't want to send the wrong message.
Right.
I think having a satellite library in the northern part of the city to service some of the visitors from our northern virons that we, in the long run, intend to do it. But it's just inappropriate to put it in the five-year capital plan at this time.
Mayor, if, if...
Councilman Montoya.
Yeah, and Tyler, just one moment, and I'll, I'll let you say. So I do remember once upon a time, as a young high school student, leveraging the Mall Brewery, which was a branch of the library at the mall. And so I know that having satellite library branches is useful, but I think this isn't a matter of not wanting to, I think Councilmember Rusin's point about talking to the Friends of the library is reasonable. But I think we have a lot of unknowns as we grapple with this budget. You know, the eight, nine-hundred-pound gorilla being whether or not we'll move forward with the public safety tax with voter approval. And so I think I'm an advocate of, of making choices where we kind of look at the budget and say, where can we tighten up a little bit so that we're conveying to the voters that we're being fiscally prudent when possible? And if that means deferring something like a future branch, I think that, I think that's reasonable personally. Tyler, you were gonna say something, though?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to point out, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but largely speaking, our capital, our capital book in the out years is largely unfunded. So we're looking at FY '25 is funded, you get into '26, '27, '28, those are, are generally speaking, unfunded. The library itself in this context that we're talking about could be pushed to those future years, or could be removed altogether. It's really, but we're happy to take council direction on that.
You have two-dollar amounts. In '27, like I said, you have $7 million. And for fiscal year '30 and beyond future years, you have another $8 million.
It's two phases.
Two phases.
Yeah, two, two, two phases for that construction of that branch library. So the first, first phase would be, you know, a pared-down central library. The second phase would add meeting rooms and a larger children's area, and some, I think, some outdoor activity spaces.
Yeah, and again, the reason why I wanted to be clear is on '27, I don't mind having discussions out in the future as this community grows, but it's just not realistic, you know, the salary and everything else. And we just had that discussion about the volunteers you need, and you're having trouble getting volunteers, you need to spend money to get more volunteers to just service one library. So that's what triggered for me. Then why are we thinking about two years from now, a second, if this is our current reality? So...
Yeah, just a, just a correction there. We're not having trouble getting volunteers, we just need someone to control the amount of volunteers that we do have.
Okay, sorry, I thought you were recruiting volunteers.
Well, that's gonna be part of their, part of their job, but we don't have any trouble with volunteers at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of falls into the herding cats category.
Right.
Councilman Gamboge.
Roger, if you back up one slide.
There.
And you had 307, you estimate 317,000 visits a year. And using Mark Woodfield higher-level math, that comes out to about 330 people figuring 30% used the upper library. That's, that's 330 people per day less on either 89 or Willow Creek. So I think it's always important to keep in mind that a lot of these plans that we have are integrated. So having a library up north would reduce the traffic to downtown, and that would be a big help.
Especially as a northern area gets built out.
We'll go ahead and move it all out to that future year, and that way it'll stay on the plan, but it won't be in the five-year. Is that where council ended up? Awesome.
Yes.
All right. I know this is exciting. This is our last department we're looking at today. So only four more slides, so. Go ahead.
Okay.
We'll let Lars do it, and John from the airport is here as well.
We're here, I'm right here.
There they are.
I'll start by introducing the fund as a whole. Airport Fund is an enterprise fund, which means we intend to have it cover its costs over the long run. We can see that the total revenues are 3.4 million. That is including an operating grant. There's two different operating grants right now, and the airport staff can discuss those in detail. But if you didn't have that grant, obviously, the operating loss would be much more significant. We are showing the, we do charge the ARF operations out of the airport fund. They are run by the fire department, but it's charged there. The total, the bottom line, the total general fund transfer in, which includes all of your capital, matches is about eight million. The reason that is, is that large this year is the, the land purchases in the capital plan as well. So whatever's not funded by the, by the grants would be paid for out of the general fund, and we're showing that in the transfer in. With that, we'll transfer it over to the airport staff.
Okay. So the revenues, like Lars just said, are, are pretty much up there. We have been going up gradually with CPI adjustments over the years, over the year, along with the operating grants, which Lars also mentioned, which are ARPA and CHRISA grants, which is COVID money. That needs to be expended in fiscal year '25 for one, and I believe right at the fiscal year '26, '25 changeover. So we're gonna be looking at trying to expend both those grants, hopefully by the end of fiscal year '25. We're also looking at new revenue sources as well. We will be bringing a advertising and marketing fee schedule to council forthcoming as we start working on making that policy in the terminal permanent advertising. The other thing that we're looking at doing is possibly bringing a ordinance in front of council for CFC charges, which are customer facility charges. These are charges that get collected through the rental car company, along with a future RFP to lease out the second car rental spot in the terminal. We're looking to do all of that within the next fiscal year with the incoming director, Rick Kreider. So those are gonna hopefully help some of those revenue sources as the operating grants are gonna be discontinued.
Councilman Gamboge had a question.
Earlier in the presentation, we heard that cost of living down in Phoenix is six-something?
Five-point-two.
Seven-point-two?
Five-point-two.
On your operating revenues, you're increasing it based on my rough calculations of 4%. How'd you come up with 4%?
So the tie-downs and the hangar rentals that you're seeing up there on the top line, those ones are our non-commercial tenants. We base that off of the CPI for the urban consumer, and we base it off of what our region, Prescott, not off of the Phoenix metro. And we do that because all of our ground leases, all of our facility leases, all of our license agreements, all have it in there that we have to use the urban consumer number. And so we do it across the board to all of our commercial and all of our non-commercial tenants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Christina, is that an FAA requirement on managing your, your revenue?
For our ground leases and, and our leaseholds that we have, it's written in there, so we have to follow through with whatever's written in those agreements. For the tie-downs and our non-commercial tenants, that's generally not. Generally, what you see in most airports and what the FAA requires is for us to be as self-sustaining as possible, meaning that the airport shouldn't be paying for utilities and not receiving money back from tenants for those utilities. As we move forward, we will be having several meetings to try to do just that with our tie-down and our non-commercial hangar rentals, as well as when we onboarded the airport leasing and property specialist. She's been going through and working on our commercial tenant leases and license agreements. And we're trying to make sure that people are complying with their lease agreements and license agreements because we do need to bring our revenues up substantially. And the only way to do it is to try to fix some of the stuff that we can fix, whether that's contracts or leases that are in breach, and trying to renegotiate new terms. And that's kind of where we're going on the commercial side. As far as the non-commercial side, we're trying to, we're trying to cover our cost for those entities to be using the rental space that they use from the airport.
There's been a real effort over the last couple of years to try to get the hangar leases brought back up to a legitimate and justifiable cost per square foot. So I know that's, that doesn't take, doesn't happen in six months or years. Sometimes it takes multiple years to get that done.
Yeah, and we are working toward that. This year is probably gonna be our most aggressive approach, and we've mentioned it at AAC meeting that we are gonna be looking into doing that this year. So they should be seeing that in the forthcoming in meetings with them as well.
Mayor Protem can you tell me?
Thank you, Mayor. Christina, didn't you about a couple of years ago, or a year ago, talk about doing an across-the-board rate study for the airport? And have you, if you did, have you done a rate study in terms of all these leases?
So when I first started, I did an audit on all of the rates and leases, and it indicated a non-collection of CPI adjustments for about 10 years. So we're in a 10-year back, and you can't go back and ask your leaseholds to do a CPI adjustment. So when I first, when I first started here at, at the city, in Prescott Regional Airport, that was what I was tasked with. And so now, currently, everybody is paying an annual CPI adjustment. with. And so now currently, everybody is paying an annual CPI adjustment. But we do have 10 years worth of revenue that it's, it's lost there, you know, and to make that up.
What is, what is the average lease agreement time? Does it fluctuate from a few years? And wouldn't it be more prudent maybe to have a review clause in those lease agreements that they're reviewed every three to five years? Just out of curiosity, because I was made aware of one lease that I think was, was it 20 years or something really ridiculous? Can't we do that going forward? Or maybe you guys have already considered it?
So a lot of the issues that we have out at the airport is we have a lot of ground leases that just get reassigned to the next person that wants to buy it at the ground rate, which at the time might have been 10 cents a square foot. And they're 80-year leases. So there's not much you can do unless you can find a breach of that agreement. So there are commercial license agreements that usually are about anywhere between five and 20 years. And 20 years usually is because they have a option to renew, but they have to come to the city to do that. Current practice right now that we're trying to do moving forward in our leases is to put everything that has a structure that was built prior no longer is considered a ground lease. And when those entities are going to be assigned or sold, we're now, we're now saying you're going to sign a commercial license agreement because there's an, there's an improvement on it. And that improvement is generating revenue that we, as an airport, per our FAA grant assurances, we are required to receive a portion of that revenue. And right now, all of our ground leases have none of that language written in them. And we don't have a way to change that until they're sold and reassigned.
And if I may, the issue here, and I think she'd agree with me, and you're here to correct me if I'm wrong, but the issue is not necessarily that the ground leases are too low. The ground leases are low for a reason, and it's to encourage infrastructure building of hangers and so forth. The problem had become that over the years, these were extended. So they're by nature are going to be longer-term leases. And that, and that's commercially reasonable. But they were extended beyond what they should have been to make it somewhat unreasonable at that point. So keeping an eye on not allowing these extensions or not agreeing to extensions on ground leases rather than converting it into a facility lease and getting appropriate rental. That's kind of part of the process and what we need to do. But that's a long, kind of a, a long game, because we have to honor the leases that are in effect, including the extensions that were granted, even though we may not make that same decision now.
But is this a policy-driven thing? Is this something that needs to be changed through a policy change?
No, it's not in a written writing policy, how we have to transfer or how we have to negotiate our terms and our agreements. Yeah, there's, there's nothing in writing.
Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi?
I think my question has been thoroughly answered by the explanations from previous questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
So Airport Capital, and I'm going to turn it over to John Kuprick.
Thank you, Christina. As you can, as you can see, for the year for fiscal year 25, part of the 699,000 of that budget for the airport pavement preservation plan, a little over 200,000 was carried over from fiscal year 24. In fact, Mark, I'm going to have to adjust that number again because we're going to have to move another project, push it forward. So with that, then also the bottleneck hangers, which is actually, that's the wash rack project that was originally targeted for 24. We're doing that in concert with the safe complex. So we're going to push that out into September, just so the two projects don't overlap so much. The new vehicles and that, those are, those are planned and worked with, with Fleet. And then also the master lock is part of our overall security project.
Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think my question's been answered yet, so fire away.
Okay.
I had a question. This is kind of a more generalized question. Looks like in fiscal year 24 and 25, capital costs at the airport are in a range, and 26 for that matter, are in a range north of about 1.1 million. Kind of guessing, I would average them out to about somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.1 to 1.2. Would you guess, or would you suggest that that's kind of a reasonable level for what we could expect to see for, for capital costs that you're listing out there as we go forward with this airport?
Yes. And we're, I'm trying to maintain that as well with that. And we've had some success too with some of our bids that have come in. Actually, they've come in, the last two of them have come in under engineers estimate.
And I, and it's, I just, I guess what I'm trying to get at is a, is a baseline understanding of what infrastructure costs at the airport look like. And so to me, it looks like we have, we have a fairly reasonable expectation that going forward, for, if we continue to maintain operations at the level we're maintaining, or even if they increase, we're going to kind of see a stable level of about 1.1 million dollars in capital costs of maintaining the infrastructure we have at the airport.
And that's correct. And a lot of the other infrastructure projects that we do are grant-funded as well. So that's, there we go.
The, just one comment on that, I guess. And that, and just to clarify, those, that infrastructure on that previous slide, that is fully coming from the general fund to, to fund those things, which is relative, honestly relatively new approach that we've had at the airport, new being in the last five or six years. Prior to that, it was all part of the, of the, of the airport fund, but with changes out there and changes in revenue and stuff.
And.
Had to be taken over by the general fund.
To, to your point, Mark, I guess, my, my question, and either of you, feel free to jump in and answer this question, but I think in light of our conversation on Tuesday that we had about entitlement funds that we're using for potential land acquisition, I guess one simple thing that I would see is that, that, that ongoing infrastructure costs we are looking at lines up pretty nicely to those entitlement funds that we have. But those entitlement funds may be tied up in land acquisition costs. And I'm not trying to put you guys in a box to answer an uncomfortable question. That's just me kind of connecting some dots.
No, you are exactly right. And depending on what happens in the, you know, with these land acquisitions, they could be tied up for several years.
Good to know. Thank you.
Just going over the, the title, the complete capital program, a lot of these, a lot of these projects have become a moving target. And this was extremely difficult to put together. One's going to be for the runway three right, two on left extension. It all depends on, on where we're at with the basis cost analysis and what we're doing. So those future funds that you're seeing going outward, that's, those numbers could be adjusted and more than likely may be reduced. So we need to find out where we're going to be at with those expenses. But the immediate expenses that we have right now for explicitly for the fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26, those are grant-funded projects that we have, and we will be expending those dollars here for the runway expansion and all the studies that are tied to it. The, going back upwards for the, for this, for the second line item, this is for the ARF building and SRE facility. And the SRE is a snow removal equipment facility. We'll be having our kickoff meeting with that actually next week. We, I've been coordinating that with Chief Holger. A lot of that has to do with the, the use, the current use of Station 73 and essentially relocating that facility on a different part of the airfield. As we looked at that, once we do that, we are looking to repurpose the old Station 73 and turning that into the snow removal facility. So I'm hoping to, to reduce costs by doing that. But it's going to be a phasing and timing depending on what happens with all the other projects. I don't know if I want to go down to, if you, unless you have any specific questions on all the other line items as we go down there. These are all grant-funded projects that we are in the, in the process of doing. I can just tell you that, you know, things are moving along very well. It's just as you get down to taxiway delta, as you see, it went from fiscal year 2024, we pushed out to fiscal year 26. That was an FAA request from our ADO for funding for that project. And that's why it's getting pushed out. Part of my pavement preservation dollars are going to go in there to, to seal coat a portion of that, and we'll probably end up reducing that project as it goes on.
You know, John, I don't see any mention of the air traffic control tower.
That is 100% federal FAA or federal funded. We have no control of that. We are just told where that's going to be on the airfield, which is going to get moved to the north side of the airfield. And all we do is give them three acres of land. We have no other say in that project.
It's going to be moved to the north side?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be, it's actually going to be moved closer to Ruger Road, just east of the Yavapai College facility in that area. They did their study on that back in 2000, starting in 2022. And we've got, we got that study returned to us. And they do a site analysis study, and that's where they positioned it. Part of the problem is with the current location that we have with the building or the tower that we have and to the height, they cannot see the end of the runway, of the crosswind runway 30, which is on the south end of the runway. So, but with that, that tower will also be probably the tallest structure in Prescott.
Yeah, I know the original speculation was it could be located on that hill on the south side and not have to be as high.
Yeah. And they did not, they chose not to put it there.
Well, as long as they're coming up with a whole cost of doing it, they can make a bigger tower on the north side.
Yeah, that's exactly it. And just as a side note, we are looking to repurpose the old tower. And there is a shortage of air traffic controllers. And working with our, one of our tenants, Embry-Riddle, we are looking to turn that tower over to the airport, and we would lease that to Embry-Riddle for training. Right now, that's where, that's in the infancy of stages of work, but that's what we're trying to do.
Councilmember Roussing?
Thank you, John. I just have a question about the U.S. Forest Service Fire Center. I believe they're expanding. And we're very fortunate because to have them stationed here in Prescott, as I remember one year they'd moved to Payson. And, you know, we're approaching fire season. And I was just wondering, I don't see any mention of them. I believe they do lease space from us. How, could you kind of go into how our relationship is with them?
Well, I can tell you, we have an extremely very good relationship with them. They are, they are looking to try to expand the ramp space that they have, specifically helipads. Right now, they have one on site. The tanker base that they have, they have three separate tanker bases. So that part of the facility is, they don't have any plans for expansion for that. The problem with the U.S. Forest Service, which a lot of other services there, there's pretty much $0 that are available for this. And so we're looking for an advocacy group with them to try to get congressional help for them to expand that and to coordinate that with the runway expansion. But they've got a big uphill battle with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam can tell me?
John, just out of curiosity, how much did we get through, was it through a grant to get that tower built?
That I don't know. I couldn't tell you. And then for the FAA tower, the new one, that grant doesn't come to us. That's all 100% funded and designed and built by the FAA. We have no, we have no say in it. And just so for the public's knowledge, the tower that we have right now and the new tower are both FAA towers. We do not own and maintain those. Other airports across the state and the nation, they own and maintain those towers.
Well, I think we can still consider that kind of a gift for the airport, can't we?
Yes, we could. I just don't know how to quantify that number. So.
Right. Well, I'm sure it's not cheap. Thank you.
No, it's not.
So are they just going to show up with a whole bunch of trucks someday and start, start building?
Well, no, I've been, I've been poking the bear at that one for quite a long time. We should be getting an initial land plan around the first of our fiscal year 25 sometime around July with that. With one of our other projects with the north ramp for the expansion, I've held off on it, just so I know what they're exactly doing. We've promised them or initially are giving them three acres of land. But at this moment, I can't tell you if it's square, rectangle, round. I don't even know what the shape is yet. I know where it's going to go. So it's, it's been kind of tough. But they are, they are working with us and with, with that. And hopefully soon here, I'll start getting some initial land plans.
I guess that falls into the category of, we're from the federal government, we're here to help.
That is correct. Yeah. I don't know if anybody's got some other, any additional questions on this. All of these projects have been, we have gotten grants for them. And we have signed, we have accepted those grants, except for like taxiway delta, we, that hasn't been given to us yet. And then, and then so some of the other ones, we are, we do have them already. So a lot of them are design grants at this point with it. Then for the capital part, this is our AEL. We have a little bit longer of a list than the library, but the reoccurring costs are the de-icing for the airfield. And, you know, that's a $70,000 budget that we have. That's just so we can get our commercial service off the, you know, during the snow and off of the runway. The other capital projects, my pavement preservation program, like I said, of moving about 200,000 in it and the original portion of it. But Mark, I probably have another, about 230,000 that we're going to move from 24 to 25 on that. And the reason being is that's for the pavement portion that we're going to be doing in front of the U.S. Forest Service. Unfortunately, it's just bad timing with this, and I don't want to be disrupting that, that taxiway during fire season. So we're going to push that off until September. The bottleneck hangers, I've gone through that with these. The only other project that I've got is the runway 1230, which is our crossed wind runway. The, the electrical system on that part of the airfield is the oldest in the entire airfield. We run about 60% of the lighting on the airfield is all LED lighting. This would transfer the old incandescent lighting into LED. We have just found, just in the last six months, that we're having a lot of issues out there with the, the lighting. So we're going ahead with this. I did apply for a grant through the, some of the bipartisan airport funding, which has just been recently that we've applied that. I'm not guaranteed that we're going to get it, but part of the, the design, I'm going to use out of my pavement preservation capital project money to pay for it. And it was an $85,000 fee for that. And then as we get closer to the, for construction on that, I'm going to have to look hard in how, if we're going to be able to get that funded with a grant. But that is a, more of an emergency type of, of a project. All the other projects that you see at the, you know, the bottom half of that list are all grant-funded. And with that, I can answer any more questions.
Well, I imagine you're probably having a hard, tough time trying to find replacing incandescent bulbs.
You know, it's.
I can't get them at True Value or anywhere else either.
Well, you know, it's. Well, you know, it's, we've pulled out a lot of them, and the city of Buckeye is coming over and taking all of our old incandescent lights. They are using those, so we are getting those repurposed. But, and if they want the rest of them, they can have the rest of them once I get them out of there. Yep, thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. Looking at the next steps in this year's budget process, our next workshop is a week from today, and we'll be covering public safety and public works and, and talk a little bit about the tax and bring you, I believe the mayor, you asked for tax impact related to the communities, so we're going to bring that at that second workshop as well when we look at all those things. Then we'll have tentative budget will be coming to council for consideration on June 11th. Following that, we'll do the necessary publishing. And then on June 25th, we'll have the public hearing for the budget, the alternative expenditure limit and our property tax, and council will consider the final budget with the adoption of a tax levy on the 9th of July. So with that, if there's no more questions with today's stuff, we'll...
I thank all the staff and the one or two remaining members of the public for hanging in there for this budget marathon. So that's part one. So we'll be doing this again on the 16th.
16th at 1:00.
Thank you all for your, for your hard work and projections and calculations, and let's all hope that the future aligns with all of your expectations and ours. So thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned.